We're giving the random windows.
We're gonna have to get that. Where we have the warranty check on that window that's leaving there. Well, good morning, everyone. I want to welcome all of you to the San Luis County Board of County Commissioners. Regular meeting today is Tuesday, April 1st, and I want to give you the forecast today. It is going to be a bit windy, just a bit. Hang on to your hats and make sure that your hair doesn't grow too white. That was just April 1st. I want to welcome all of you. It is 9:00 a.m. today, and I want to call this meeting to the Board of County Commissioners to order. Please rise for an education by Commissioner Lucero and fall by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Tony Hux.
Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us in this meeting and for being there for us whenever we needed. Thank you for your dedication to our lives. We trust that you will guide us on the path and lead us to reach a consensus that reflects your will. May our words and our chapters be guided by your love and grace. In your mighty name we pray.
To the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Mr. Don Camp.
Please, sir. Here, Commissioner Hess. Here. Commissioner Lewis.
I'm here, sir. Approval of the agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain the motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda. Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes. Thank you. And we have the minutes on item two, the consideration of minutes, regular meeting minutes of March 18, 2025. Commissioners, do you have any questions, any comments on those minutes? Here and then, I will entertain the motion to approve it.
Of the approved regular meeting minutes in March 18, 2025.
Second. Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Come to section three, reading of correspondence, Commissioner can give reports. Commissioner Lucero, would you like to go first, or?
Sure. On March 20th, we had a working group meeting with Chelsea Booth, I think, concerning a homeless population in and around Trinidad. The ICOP word that the city was going to put an ordinance in that prohibited camping within the city of Trinidad. And somebody from the city had brought up that the city owns property out in the county more than the fairgrounds, maybe for a proposed camping requirement. Well, then I started getting phone calls out there concerning the residents in that area. And it was brought to light that during our meeting, she said it was brought up, but there's nothing solid at this time. I informed her that county has manage regulations that they would have to go through even though the city owns the property. There's no city water, there's no sewer out there. Concern was is the county is getting ready to make some big improvements at the fairgrounds, and also the county extension office has classes for youth out there. And the concern that they're going to make a campground for the homeless people is going to be a big issue out there. So I think they, during our work group, they have kind of narrowed it down. They're going to make a smaller work group discussion where their preferred way of doing it is trying to find a housing that has city and sewer, which is probably the more appropriate way to deal with the homeless issues around the county. We, I happen to live out near the fairgrounds. We have problems out there already. So that was one of the, the working group is ongoing. I think Mr. Don Camp attended a meeting last week. We're going to keep on top of that. Also, on, I think, the 27th, CCI had called for emergency meeting to inform the county that the state has immediately stopped COVID-19 grants and awards that was going to be terminated immediately, which will affect our Home Department. And I'm hoping that she will be on the, on our meeting today to kind of give us an overview how it's going to affect her. So that's about all I know.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hess?
Yeah, thank you for that. And I'm going to elaborate a little more on the homeless meeting that we had, the Home Coalition that the police department in Los Angeles County was there in force. Thank you to Director Aragon and Director Kevin Gonzalez for coming at the request of the county to help navigate this tough situation. As Commissioner Lucero had mentioned, they had speculated putting it out just north of the fairgrounds. We don't want them to push their problem out onto the county and affect those private property owners. Their property values will plummet, and we heard them loud and clear, they don't want that to happen out there. And also, we already have problems with vandalism and the homeless in the fairgrounds. We don't need that to, we don't want to exacerbate that situation at all. And we recognize you need to set this project up for success, and to do that, they need to be within walking distance of the soup kitchen and other amenities. Way out there, that would be four or five miles from, from the soup kitchen. I can't see them making that, that, travel that twice a day, once in and once back home. On the 27th, you're going to hear a common theme of every one of these meetings that I was on, the cutbacks on federal funding. Purgatory Water Partnership Board net and federal monies were of huge concern. Where the state funding seems to be holding stable, the forestry money and so forth, cocoa money, they're all subject to scrutiny at this time with Purgatory Water Partnership. CDA and CCI, Colorado Department of Ag and the Colorado Counties Incorporated have their monthly meeting. It's a reoccurring meeting that Commissioner Kate Greenberg gives us an update on what's happening with CDA and vice versa from CCI. And she told us that IPATH AI is unaffected at this time. So Colorado is the first state to be clear of any IPATH AI. That's the bird flu. And we have a new assisted state vet, Erin McGrath, and again, concerns about federal funding, hiring, any additional hiring was halted, FSA, NRCs, et cetera. Farmers Ranchers and other organizations are already invested monies in a lot of these FSA and NRCs funds, programs, and they have invested their money into the project. The concern is when they're going to get their portion of it. So a lot of them are 50-50 cost share or 70-30 cost share of sorts, and they're going to have to wait on a match. And I'm sure it'll come through eventually, but if they have borrowed the money to do it, it's concerning. Many projects are opening back up. One thing that was recognized was possibly the algorithms are identifying diversity, equity, and inclusion, and are pulling those programs that have any of that in there. For instance, our young farmer and rancher programs talk about equity, and those programs have been pulled. I hope that those are reinitiated. The SOA wealth program funding is also in jeopardy. Noxious weed grant funding was also cut. The agricultural takes program was cut 50%. Cash funds were cut 544,000. Agriculture management was cut 620,000. And livestock disease and gambling fund was cut 250,000. So huge concern about some of this that is receiving federal funding. The Colorado Counties Incorporated and Colorado Department of Health and met, they have an emergency meeting as Commissioner Lucero stated. Jill Hudson Ryan, the director of CDPA requested the meeting and the CCI commissioners to provide info on how the cancellation of four COVID-19 grant programs by the feds will affect counties. The total ground amount for these grants was 200,000. The grants over the next 18 months were canceled on Tuesday, the 25th. Issuing stock work order, these were mainly temporary grants. Anything that was specific COVID means immunization funding and vaccination impacts. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. So much information. I want to, on the 25th, I attended a meeting with the progress and next steps for assisting jails. This was organized by the Rosales Cabal. And one of the things that is happening through the providers, the medical providers on the jail facilities throughout the state of Colorado, the new jail standards commission and their requirements to operate a jail are going to be taking effect soon, or perhaps some of them might already be there. But one of the things that I learned that it was quite pretty alarming is there is this new, this new fentanyl. It's called carfentanol, and it's a synthetic opioid approximately 10,000 times more potent than morphine and 100 times more potent than the regular fentanyl. That's very hidden in the streets of Colorado. So when the group got together, it was a pretty informational perspective of what is to be taking place, how do we stay ahead of this whole thing with the opiates? And how do we help those individuals that come in contact with this? So there is, there is a flyer brochure that was sent out, and I will send this over to Mr. Lucero. She can put it on the, on the San Luis County website. One of the things that, of course, they're saying for any law enforcement officer or any person giving care to someone that may be suspicious of having used this carfentanol, of course, they go through extreme caution, beware of any exposure, seek immediate attention. So now, then one of my questions to the group that they was, do we, officers, our first responders, our emergency individuals, and even emergency department personnel that come in contact, and perhaps if an individual is transported to a facility, how do we address that? So the, one of the, one of the great things that was mentioned there in the San Luis County had an initiative of early on providing this medical assisted treatment through mobile units. So I could imagine that there's going to be a lot of information coming on this, but that was one of the things that, my goodness, we don't need any more of this, but definitely it's happening, and it's happening here. And one of the, let me, let me, one of the statements that I took is remember that carfentanol can resemble powdered cocaine, powder cocaine or heroin. If you suspect the presence of carfentanol or synthetic opioid, do not take samples or otherwise, disturb the substance, as this could lead to accidental exposure. Rather, secure the substance and follow up through transportation procedures. So whatever that is, I think as the medical profession gets a hold of something, the dark side of things comes around and brings another surprise. But that was a very interesting meeting that we'll go ahead and follow up and I'll send that to you, so you can post it on the website. Also, on the 26th, we had, I attended a meeting with the Board of Health, local public health department. And as Commissioner Tony has, part of the comments that came out of there, also the high, you know, the transferring of any communicable diseases. Right now, we're just keep on pretty much on alert and see what is, what is happening. On the 27th, we had, I attended a meeting with some central council of governments, and of course, as without laboring the point, also addressed some of the things that would be impacted when it comes to funding. But more than anything else, I want to remind us that Colorado's budget is about $1 billion in deficit. So they have to balance the budget. I had, I had an opportunity yesterday to go through the proposed, the proposed budget that the state of Colorado is putting in there, and they're going to talk about a few programs. But there is also some of the programs that are going to be getting some funding in there. So if you get an opportunity, go back, go to the website and check the proposed general fund budget that has to be heard here before the EMA, that is extremely important. So a lot of the council of government programs that we are addressing have funding from the state of Colorado, so they're going to be obviously impacted. The, oh, I wanted to close with this. The, the information when it comes to any type of illicit drugs, if you hear anything, contact the health department, contact the hospital, contact any medical provider, EMTs, I would imagine, are getting this information, rather than, it's getting to be pretty sad that at times if we see some white powder, we don't know what we're going to be coming in contact as the bits Americans. So be careful, there is a lot of information, and I can tell you, Rosales Cabal put a lot of information out there, and it's to be very appreciated, but who would have known that there is always going to be one of those more imperative and more surprising things. Also, on the Colorado Counties Incorporated, you will find the meeting that we had, the emergency meeting that we had with CDPA, as far as outlining what's happening with the COVID funds that are now going to be at stock. You will see exactly what happened, the questions that were asked. I didn't have, I didn't attend the meeting, of course, my fellow commissioners were on it, but there is a video and there is a letter also that came from CDPA. But again, it is, at this point in time, trying to balance budgets all over the place, and we aren't at that time. So that's going to be my report, and I want to thank you all of you that are here for daring with us. So now let's go to the next item. Elected official updates. Assistant Lado, I know it's in another meeting, so let me call, she's not here. Clerk reporter, we have you on from the Children's Bureau's office. Anyone from the treasurer's office. Sheriff's office. District attorney. Recorder. Here and then, we're going to go to the next, to the next item. We're going to go to item six, public comment. Mr. Don Camp?
Yes, sir.
I come, Ms. Garcia, wanted to, Ms. Garcia, were you going to make any?
Yes. Now?
Yeah, please come up.
I have about 20 pages, 10 minutes each.
Yeah, well, there are about three minutes altogether.
I'm Kathy Garcia, Southern Colorado Regional Director for Congressman Jeff Hurd. And he has been very busy in Washington, introducing various bills. He is, as you know, a member of the Natural Resources Committee, Transportation Infrastructure Committee, Science Space and Technology Committee, and he's also vice chairman of the Western Caucus, and he's very active in other caucuses there in Washington, DC. He really believes there shouldn't be no pets genetic, and he's concerned a lot of people that need it, and he wants to see that those people that need the services get the services. Some programs, like for the hospital, this past CR, were expanded, more money was given to them for Medicaid. There's a lot of things that he's working on, and one of the things that I need to tell you is, I've asked you for a list of transportation priorities, which I hope you get that to me soon. And the other thing is, is that the House is not sure if they're going to do congressional direct spending. They're not sure. But our office wants to be ready in case they say yes. And so in that case, we don't want counties or cities or anyone to fill out long paperwork application. We'd like for you just to submit a letter that's one page or one and a half pages long, listing the priority, the project, whom, you know, when, where, what, every, all the details, how many total amounts it would cost to do that project, and send it to us by the 20th of April. So if you can do that for projects in the county, just in case the House says, yes, we're going to do congressional direct spending, we just want to be ready. Any questions?
None.
Got it?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kathy. I'm also going to call anybody else, anyone online that would like to address the Board of County Commissioners, same procedure, three minutes. Here and then, we're going to go to the next section. Unfinished business. We have laid on the table, either payday consideration of removing a section of County Road 32.4 from San Luis County, highway user stats plan screening inventory for the city of Trinidad, Love Store Annexation. Mr. Don Camp, I know you were going to do a little bit of research to see what was the process, to see that and others, and I saw a couple of emails that were attached to the, to this item. Would you please extrapolate on that? Oh, yes. Let's, I will entertain a motion to remove from the table. So, thank you, sir.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Back to you, Mr. Don Camp.
Commissioner, before you forget consideration is the removal of segment, the segment of 32.4, it is found by 25 East to the level of trash that the city of Trinidad is annexing. I believe that's a piece of real estate property on north of that segment of road. And as the board, as Commissioner, I've heard this mentioned, and ask you to reach out to COT, to see if there's any official process to go through, to get that transfer taken care of, and see how we respond back, seeing basically there is, and we just need to inform COT that they're transferring that piece of segment of 32.4 to the city of Trinidad. And that would be my recommendation. The city can hold on, or excuse me, the county can hold on to that segment, but as we discussed at the last meeting, as that Love Store opens up and the truck traffic and all the other traffic starts impacting that short stretch of county road, it would be up to the county to maintain and bill transfer of that, and it would be a bad loss as far as our HUT and representation received for that short segment versus what's going to cost us to maintain that. So my recommendation would be to transfer it to the city of Trinidad.
Thank you, sir. So just a couple of follow up and a question. The comment is, I believe by rumors, that it was less than $500,000 or somewhere around.
I'll be answering that question.
Thank you. And the question is, would you also have to notify anybody through the HUT, or is that by doing it with COT and decreasing the inventory, does that suffice?
May I clarify, Commissioner? When I'm speaking to COT, I'm actually talking to the HUT portion of COT. Pardon me for not clarifying that with the folks, and every year we send our road inventory to every, I think, the world, usually goes in January, send it in February, and then make all the adjustments, so it's safe to be moving.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Commissioners? No questions? If you have, no questions, I will entertain motion at this time. I will move to, removing the segment of County Road 32.4 from San Luis County, HUT screen inventory to the city of Trinidad, Love Store Annexation.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for doing that research, Mr. Don Camp. Nine, section nine, new business, consideration of IFB 25R 005 dust control mitigations. Don Camp?
We should move, we should move Department's legislative bids for dust control application on, it's seven loops, eight loops now, same ones we've been forwarding, or putting this operation on for the last three, four years. The following results, GMCO, Magloride, $1.24 per gallon, standard price, $215,291 to the US cents, and I believe in a couple of tree shivers and shivers in Magloride, $1.32 a gallon. We shot a short segment of the only road last year with the Lindor product, some of the different Lindor product, Magloride, the short west, the ten second, the ten sections. So, little bridge recommendation is from the board to award Magloride application at $1.24 per gallon, standard price, $215,291 to the US cents to GMCO. We heard all of their bids except GMCO.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions from Mr. Don Camp?
If I may, one of the sidebars of this, and not to mention, is that Department of Defense is also interested in doing perhaps some, some of their roads out on Penny Canyon. And so our plan is to put together a process that would entail to do some of that forward application. I think this year, we'll be considering, which is one of our forecasts, so we use these numbers and tell the DOD that we will be in contact in one, some more year, because of the odds is, so.
Good. After the break, I'll continue meeting. Please, did I, have you taken a look at the public or general promise through NICO?
I have served right now, they only have more than four different warrants.
Not quite, would you be before?
Yeah, not, they don't have any warrant yet.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Here and then, I will entertain motion. We move to approve IFB 25R 005 dust control application submitted by GMCO using Magloride of $173,622 with a cost of $215,291 to the US cents. Second?
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, thank you, sir. The next one is, I'd be, considerations of retail liquor license, the new application for Homark, liquor wireage, and store gaming. My first question, counsel?
Review the application.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Commissioners, are there any specific questions on this item? Here and then, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve retail liquor license for new application for Homark, 55,000 and 6,000.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Sir?
Commissioner Lewis? Yes, sir, thank you. United Sea, consideration of resolution 25-018, reappointing Mr. Body Corbo to the E911 Authority Board of Directors. I believe this was approved at the last hand, and you have a resolution to be read. Mr. Don Camp?
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of San Luis County, Colorado, make an appointment to San Luis County E911. make an appointment to Los Angeles County E911 Authority Board of Directors. Resolution number 25 dash 018, whereas Los Angeles County Emergency 911, Prin E911 Authority Board, has been informed for the purpose of providing policy guidance and direction for the operations of emergency two-way legal dispatch. The emergency service provided within Los Angeles County City of Trinidad, including law enforcement, fire response, emergency medical services. And whereas vacancy is, exists on the Board of Directors, a position subject to appointment by the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas recommendations for appointment had been received from rural fire districts offering within the county, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado. The Board of County Commissioners accept the nomination by the Fisher Street Fire Department and hereby appoints Dominique Prin Buddy and Prin Coro to fill the vacancy of Los Angeles County E911 Authority Board of Directors from the date of this appointment until April 30, 2029. Our motion may be seconded, voted a vote. This resolution was adopted as firstly of April 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any discussion, Commissioners? Here and now, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution 25 dash 048, reappointing Buddy Coro to the E911 Authority Board of Directors.
Second. Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. 90, consideration of OBCC number 7029 to Mr. Jeffrey W. Murray for $7,340.28.
Before the Commissioner for consideration is OBCC number 7029.
Are there any questions? We have, uh, we have represented this here from the, uh, treasurer's office. Anybody have any questions for him? No questions? Thank you. Thank you for bringing this. Uh, if, uh, we don't have any questions, I will entertain a motion.
I want to approve the consideration of OBCC number 7029 for every 100,000 for $7,340.28.
Second motion. Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Uh, the next item, uh, 90, consideration of proclamation acknowledging Trinidad State College 100 years of service. Uh, Mr. Donicamp?
Before your commission for consideration is proclamation acknowledging Trinidad State College's 100 years of service.
Thank you. I, uh, I want to make a couple of comments before we go into the actual resolution. Uh, congratulations to Trinidad State. Uh, had a conversation with Sperry yesterday and, uh, just looking back, uh, at, uh, what an important institution that is to our community. And, uh, I hope all of us are going for celebration. 1925 was, uh, was a great year for Trinidad and, uh, prior to Trinidad State. And I can tell you a story or two about that institution. And so for that very reason, I'm honored to have that, the opportunity to participate in the celebration of the college and pass that on to the president and to the entire executive team at Sperry. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, as the county have a lot to do with back in 1925, we were doing a lot of, uh, researching as to how the city and county came together to bring that institution. And one of the, one of the things that is so near and dear to my heart is that the mission was access. Access to individuals from this part of the state that couldn't otherwise travel to, uh, other places. And so it became the beacon of education for a lot of the people, northern Colorado, I mean, southern Colorado and northern Mexico. And so having a reciprocity with the state of New Mexico, it is so imperative that this institution remains for another 100 years. So I think personally, it is my honor to have that. And I know Mr. Sperry was going to bring, uh, a, an updated resolution with space for signatures. So on that, Commissioners, the floor is yours.
Drat, glad to have you there.
Do we, uh, do we qualify you as a certain kind of candidate? Um, before, before we sign, let's go ahead and go through the, uh, the approval, okay? Uh, so having no other questions, we can stay right there. Uh, let's go ahead and, uh, do we have any more discussion on this? If not, I will entertain.
To approve the proclamation acknowledging Trinidad State College's 100 years of service. Second. Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. It is official. So now we get to, uh, we actually get to sign. Governor, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day and looking forward to, uh, all festivities and activities.
Absolutely. And just, just one moment, just saying it took the joy and appreciation that we're here. Thank you so much for doing this. I love that it's a, um, joint proclamation with both the city and the county for the reasons you talked about, that those are the places for us to work together. And the college is certainly right in the thick of that in our community. So we really appreciate you all so very much. And thank you for your service to our community and dealing with, as I'm listening here today, thank you for dealing with the, gosh, the issues that the county is facing, that our city is facing, and how can we work together with those. So with much appreciation.
Can you use some, Mr. Donicamp?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And can I have, are you going, you will present that at the city council? I was planning to tonight. Cause I already emailed me and she was going to pick it up, but I'll let her know that you're here. We had, um, totally rolled with it right after this. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks.
90, consideration of a fee being made with BURCLAC LLC. Uh, Mr. Donicamp?
I will refer to Council of Commissioners.
Thank you.
I would leave you here now, I have other concerns.
Thank you. Uh, I would imagine that the other officers, while I have reviewed that document, Commissioners, any questions, any discussion on this particular agreement?
No, sir.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I want to approve, we agree with TRB LLC.
Sorry, Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. 90, consideration of Perry Stokes Airport, Airport's Bolton, mandatory maintenance task order number one. Uh, Mr. Donicamp?
Consider for your consideration is Bolton makes task order number one for sealing the taxiways and no ways of the airport. And there are consultants who assist us with their forward upgrades ongoing.
Thank you, sir. And I will never forget the, uh, the, uh, priority, funding for this project. Sorry, the funding for this project has been?
It's, it's through our, every year we get a lot of, you know, helping our financial program. At least 300,000, 150,000, so we've accumulated those funds. Plus there was an airport in, I think it was London Airport, one on the north. They didn't expand all their, it was only expired, but they didn't expand all of their allotment. So they asked Los Angeles County through our prior consultants, Marshawn, if we would be interested in spending, well, it was supposed to $100,000. And the consultant at the time said it would be good for us to do that, but for Los Angeles County, I should, I should do that. There's a story behind that, on hindsight, um, we've had discussions about that in-house. It's always love. We will be spending $100,000, it was $200,000 in that, uh, that allotment too. But I think it was London's, of course.
So I see that the authorized fees, $9,000,000 with, uh, uh, other local and, and state shares. So the money has been allocated. Uh, any questions from anyone?
And we'll be doing that in-house. No, sir, this, this is all FAA contractors. It's, we do very little. Far as I know, we've done nothing to do with the airport that the FAA is involved in.
That's, that's really, that's really strange.
You know, who's qualified to do any work for them, the consultants who can do the consulting for them. Not for them, but for funds that they sent to the general aviation airport officials.
And you, uh, any other discussion? I entertain a motion.
Move to approve Perry Stokes Airport's Bolton make airfield, airfield payment, task order number one. Second. Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we come to the next section, section 10, uh, financial matters. Consideration of payroll and bills for the second half of March 2025, uh, Finance Directorate Board.
So, CDPH came up as of March 31st, 2025, $224,000, 384.80 cents. Do you have any questions on payroll?
You know, outside of, uh, uh, just, uh, overtime, I mean, I think the last, I don't know exactly how we solve that. It's not a, it's not a question that I would be able to resolve. It's just, I've seen the last, uh, few tables, quite a bit of, uh, throughout the other county. You know, not specifically in the department, just, uh, I don't even know if that's even a question. Let, let it be just a kind of a comment.
I missed that, I, I don't know.
Well, there is, there is a lot of, I have seen overtime, uh, that, that is actually becoming quite, as I said, that even a year ago, we quite didn't have quite as much as we're having this year. And so I don't know if it's due to vacancies.
So we have, we have certain departments that are, you know, just like they're using it. I'm saying the sheriff department is one. Um, I'm not too sure with the department, but, um, where the bridge is allowed to work Fridays, if they're going to be productive, so they're allowed that overtime. Um, I actually get to talk to one department and they're going to actually start giving us comp time. So that the overtime, because for a budget, that's a discussion with the budget to say, you know, if your employees who stay months actually have been competent, so that they can take a day off instead of actually using this overtime. And that only have a discussion of, of them.
Well, and then I think every one of the, uh, departments, they have the wrong budget, they're monitoring it.
Correct.
I just.
For a budget, but we can talk about that because we want them to stay within budget because it could actually get a little bit costly.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
Sure. Invoices that were paid on March 19th were $244,192.49 cents. Let's see, so this one here was, um, a revell, um, revell for A for $2,520 assessor. Um, so these were invoices that Paula received that were really late for the boiler for 2021, 2023 for 400, and then the boiler inspection for 250. Let's count. And then, um, talent technology, um, this is the company recorder, their contract for IDOC is $7,334.91. Is there anything I might have missed or question on, on the invoices?
Commissioner? No questions? No questions? Well, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I intend to entertain a motion to approve the financials.
Who moved to, uh, approve DRL and Billsburg, second half of March 2025?
Second. Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Executive session. The board will be under 24/6, 4/24, be confirmed with the county attorney for the purpose of receiving mutual advice and specifically for questions. I nominate those, B, county directors, C, strategies. Commissioners, uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the record of all county commissioners in waiting for executive session with, uh, small visits. So, is that it? Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez? Yes, thank you.